Thank you, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is January 3rd, 2023. I don't know how long it takes everybody else to write the right year, but it takes me about three weeks. So Happy New Year to everybody and welcome. It is 7:40, I mean 6:40, excuse me. Well, I'm daylight saving time. I need to announce that those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APEC and ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chair, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wiretap Statute. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Per Air Shirley Regional School Committee policy BEDH, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the school committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express an opinion on issues of school committee business as posted on the meeting agenda. Citizens will have three minutes to express their views. Thank you very much. I would call the regular meeting to order, and if we could have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle Towne, will you please give us a roll call?
Mr. Rasmussen?
Here.
Mrs. Crenshaw?
Here.
Mr. Rundus?
Here.
Mrs. Griesch?
Here.
Mr. Rupert?
Here.
Ms. Sade?
Here.
And thank you, everybody. We have 100% tonight, which is awesome. Item number four is our high school representative, fresh off vacation, Anna Sanchez.
All right, so the first thing that I'm going to talk about is the college search. So I know that most of us, the seniors, are hearing back now from early action and things like that. I still have a few friends who are still applying, but for the most part, I'm done receiving answers. I only have one school to hear left from, and that's the private school I applied for. So I'm excited. But other than that, it's kind of stressful having to choose which one. But so far, the one who's giving me the most is Bridgewater, and they gave me $11,000, which is like basically all of tuition. So that's pretty nice. But so far, all the other schools have given me from like $1,500 to like $3,000. Yeah. And then another thing that we're doing right now in school is another government class debate. And we're still using the norms that Ms. Kendall helped us create. And this time, we're doing one on the Electoral College, which is like slightly more heated than the lobbyist one, but it's going to be okay because we didn't get to choose our groups again. But this time, she's having us do the work in the same room, so we like can't talk about the other team, which has been a little bit helpful. And then, other than that, I'm pretty excited to go into the next semester. I have one class that I'm really excited for, which is History of Rock and Roll. I've been trying to get into it since my freshman year, and it's never worked out until this year. So I'm very excited about that. And then I have short stories and current events, which I'm also very excited for.
That's nice.
I have a few.
Go ahead.
So History of Rock and Roll, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. I highly recommend it at Fly Mouse.
Yeah, I take my Shakespeare class directly next to him in the time that he's having his History of Rock and Roll class, and you can always hear.
Yeah, I'd never use on that one. There's something else you said that I was going to ask about. What was the second thing you talked about?
The government debate.
Oh, yes. I was going to tell you that we had a presentation after our last meeting in between, you know, your meeting last time and tonight's meeting. So our mid-month meeting by Mrs. Kendall, who talked about, you know, what she's doing, the work she's doing in the high school. And we talked about how you had spoke about, you know, doing the norms and how that was really helpful. So it was really nice to hear you speak about it and then have her presentation, because we had like a student perspective beforehand, which was really nice to hear. So I shared with her how you had talked about it, and she was really excited at that.
It was like surprising, because I feel like every year in our classes, we develop like a class list of things that we should be doing, but we never like thought about them before. So the way that she has us implement them is like has us reread them before we go into like sort of a heated discussion, which is really helpful for some of us, like myself, who like, you know, want to impulsively say something. But it's been really helpful, especially in government class.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. We talked about, you know, in a class like government, where there can be, you know, very extreme opinions, how that's especially helpful. But even any classroom, just, you know, how to handle, you know, relationships and how to deal with your peers. It was really, really nice to hear that that work is happening at the high school and that you guys are enjoying and seeing the rewards from it. So thanks for sharing that with us last time.
And so for me, one, first, I love your authenticity. And I've always wondered this. So I'm going to ask you this question. Have you built it on the spot? You can say so.
Okay.
So you know how you talked about in your government class, where now you all have to sit in the same room, right? So you can't talk about each other. And that sparks a question for me that, do you find there's a correlation between saying harsher things, or maybe things that you normally would hold in because you're not in front of that person? When you're in the same space as that person, it's easier for you to control what you say?
Oh, definitely.
Right?
I think that people are typically less inclined to say something that they truly feel to the face of the person that it's about. I mean, for me, it's not necessarily about like the person. It's about like the argument, which is actually one of our norms. It's like critique the idea, not the person. But for some people, it can be like especially hard if they feel like they're losing. But I think that putting the people together in the same room has helped us like focus more on like the arguments and like the people.
Does it help you ever walk away and even evaluate your opinion? Is it easier when you're face to face as opposed to, let's say, when you were online in class and you would have to take this class? Do you feel like it's easier for you to evaluate yourself and what you believe in when you have those interactions? Or even are you doing kind of a think tank in the room with other people?
I definitely think so. I think, well, because last debate, I was on like their side. So this time, it's like, are lobbyists unnecessary? And we got the, yes, they're unnecessary, which is like definitely the path of least resistance. But last time, we got lobbyists. Did I just say lobbyists? It looked telepathic. You know what I'm saying? Last time, we had lobbyists, if they were unnecessary or necessary. And I was on the unnecessary side, which was not the easiest side. And this time, it's the Electoral College. So I kind of like, I've been on both sides. So I kind of know what they're going through and what I'm going through at the moment. And also, it's really difficult, because you don't necessarily get to choose who you're partnered up with. And there are a lot of like varying degrees of like participation in that class, I'd say. Kind of one of those honors classes that like everyone does. So it's like, we have a lot of different perspectives in one class. So I think that it definitely helps in that area.
Awesome. And I appreciate that, because the more that we advocate for difficult conversations and trying different ways to do things despite some of the, you know, negative outcomes that can happen or what may seem scary, seeing you all do that in class and come out better for it as individuals and as students, I think is really, really important. So that's why I kind of put you on the spot. I'm sorry that I had the opportunity, and I just, I didn't want to pass it up. And kind of in the vein of how I look at things in my perspective, I am going to continue to advocate that you do continue to review yourself after and in those moments when you have those extreme voices or where you're extremely negative, look back on those classes so that you can see your growth, because it'll be a lot easier to silence those kinds of thoughts, because you'll see your progression. So there's a lot of work you're doing in that class on yourself and on the progression of just simply being a better citizen, which is what we ultimately want. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do you feel that, I've been going through some of those and some of the topics you talked about, that is any carryover to your interaction with the people outside of the class? Because you see, you see different viewpoints within this class. You see people that are arguing back and forth. But that everybody leaves the class and you're back into just your regular life. Do you feel for good or for ill, any changes? Or do you see any changes in interaction between students?
Well, we had like an instance during our last one, where there was an instance where a student was like getting made fun of because of the way he reacted to something. And then we brought it up to our teacher, and then she literally pointed to where that like didn't follow on the norms. And she was like, we're not supposed to do this. But other than that, not really. I think there's definitely been like some talk of it afterwards. And some people wanted to change the way that the debate was formatted so it could be more argumentative. And then me and a bunch of other students in the class were like, we don't want it to be like that. We like the order. I don't want to like, one of the students suggested it was like a one-on-one, like back and forth thing. And I was like, I can't do that. I would just break down on this stuff like that. But other than that, not really. Yeah.
So how many students, this is a fourth level or senior level class, and how many students out of the student body are, take this course? Or just broadly under here?
I think it might be like specific to my class, but I think there's about like maybe 20 of us in the, our government class. I don't think that the other honors government class is doing what we're doing.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Christie knows better. So we should always take his brain. I'm just curious, because it sounds so good. It's too bad if you don't have a more expansive program of this type.
Madam Chair?
All seniors participate in government. There's two teachers, so the experience is slightly different.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you. Always good to know.
And there's honors, and then there's AP. So there's levels of government, too, correct?
I don't think there's an AP class this year, actually.
This one? Not this year?
There's no AP class this year.
There's no AP class this year?
Yeah. Some of my friends are taking the honors class with the same teacher who taught AP, though. So it's like basically the same, in some ways.
Let's hope the pleasure of the APA exam.
You mean, just taking something for inspiration? Oh, my heavens. Experience? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Now that we've interrupted you a hundred times, if there's something else you would like to say?
You're her favorite part of the meeting. You like that.
Do you have a sport?
I don't play any sports, but I do participate in my Valley Studios production at the end of the spring. So yeah, it's actually a day after graduation, which is kind of like a little bit stressful. But other than that.
What's the production this year?
This year, it's Mary Poppins. So I'm very excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good for you.
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me.
If you want to sit down and see the basketball game, we'll meet you and take off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're up to item number five on the agenda, which is public participation. Ms. Towne, do we have anybody online tonight? Okay.
Nothing in the chat.
Pardon?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat. Thank you so much. So the next item is the consent, I can't talk tonight, consent agenda. We have from December 21st, our last meeting, the minutes for release. If anybody has any additions, corrections, if they'd like to put it in now. Hearing none. We go to the warrant memo, please. AP warrant number 1085 dated 12/9/22 for $1,227,445.1. That's the biweekly AP warrant. We have warrant number 1086 for 12/9/22 for $2,637.60, which is for merchant services. And we have AP warrant 1093 dated 12/23 for $314,861.91, and that's for merchant services. We move on to payroll warrants. We have payroll warrant number 13 dated 12/16/22 It's a biweekly payroll. Did I say it wrong?
Yeah. Can you repeat that? You didn't say that.
You could say it.
Payroll warrant 13 dated 12/16/2002 for $1,1,203.
I have two, I have 303 on my sheet.
Online, it says two.
Okay. Well, mine says three. So what do we, do we hold that?
I have three in the draft.
30505, 30305.
Really close?
I guess that's different.
Oh, you know what? I think you're looking at, because mine doesn't have red lines. Are you looking at a, you might be?
Oh, an earlier draft, okay.
Okay, we have payroll warrants 13.1 on 12/16/22 for $22,280.46. We have payroll warrant 14 dated 12/30/22. That's pretty, pretty good, isn't it? $997,986.12 for the biweekly payroll. This is all FY '23. We have payroll warrant number 14.1 dated 12/30/22 for $9,838.17, and that's FY '23 biweekly payroll. I entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda. Are any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second is? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's fully passed. Item number 10, we have a policy review report.
We don't have the superintendent's.
We have new business.
Oh. I just skipped half the agenda. We want to go to the basketball game. Okay. I guess we have to have the superintendent's report.
No, new business first.
Oh, new business. Budget discussions. Mr. Plunkett and Mr. Runda.
Madam Chair? The budget discussion tonight is very preliminary with the new administration coming in to the governor's office. They have a grace period to provide the budget numbers for the state appropriations the first week in March. So the Department of Ed is asking us to estimate our foundation budget, which is 11 classifications across all of our grade levels, and also to estimate our local contributions for our member towns. And finally, to also estimate the state aid. So we have a lot of work to do on estimating these numbers. We've already started building the budget, so we will have a preliminary presentation at the next meeting. But the caveat is, a lot of these numbers are estimates. The Department of Ed is giving us some guidance or some conservative numbers to use for inflation. A lot of the calculations have been held even from last year. So they want us to maintain the safe last year's numbers to be conservative. But it is, the foundation budget is, is the backbone. Basically, the numbers that we have to have to plug in and get the foundation budget, the local contribution, and the state aid numbers. So we know that the minimum aid for hold harmless districts, which Air Shirley is a hold harmless, so it's $30 per student. So we're going to use that for our Chapter 70 estimate. And a lot of the other factors from the Chapter 70 calculation will be brought forward from last year's numbers. Income and growth for the towns, things like that, will all be held from last year's numbers. And then we'll be using our enrollment from October 1, 2022 to estimate our foundation budget. Those numbers are relevant. Those are the appropriate numbers for FY '24. Those numbers that just came out with the SIMS reports in October. So we will have some really good estimates in place, hopefully for our next meeting. There's a lot of math to do, so we'll be, we'll be working on that. So that's where we are with the FY '24 budget. As far as certifying, I know you might have concerns about the timing. We're supposed to go to the towns in February, according to the budget timeline. And then we have to certify the budget 45 days before the first town meeting, which is April 24th, looks like Air. So if, for some reason, the numbers do change in March with the new administration, it changes our state aid or our foundation enrollment, we'll be able to recertify. We do not have to go to the towns for a town meeting if it's a level funded or a decrease. If it's an increase, we will have to go back to the local authorities. They have the right to hold a town meeting or not vote. If they don't vote on it, if they don't hold the vote, then it's approved. But we can recertify after you certify the March meeting. We're scheduled to have the certification. So if we do certify, we can always change it, recertify it at a later date, just depending on if it's an increase or a decrease, what we have to do after that. So if it's a decrease or stays the same, we don't have to go to the local, we don't have to go to the member towns.
And is that the first meeting in March that we'd have to vote on it to get the 45?
It's usually like March 17.
Oh, so we have until the second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Looks like March 7th this year.
So it's more like the first meeting?
First meeting, yeah.
And that's the 40, that's at least the 45 days.
And that gives you 45 days before the Air Town meeting.
Yes.
And Shirley's after that.
Yeah, Shirley, a month later, yeah.
And when does the state, like when will the new, in March, like early March, did they say?
They have, it has to be released the first week. I don't know if that means Friday of the first week in March. They could release it sooner. So we're hoping that they will be able to release it sooner.
I'm just wondering if there's any time between when they release and when we have our first meeting so that we could make adjustments if needed, but we can still do it after, so.
So if we, so let's say that we don't have the numbers, so we can't certify because we don't have the numbers from the state. What, what's the legal leeway there?
Well, we're going to have estimated numbers. So we're going to, we're going to have numbers, which we do, we do a lot of estimating anyways.
Right.
But this is going to be a little bit more, because they want us to dive down into the foundation budget, which spreads all the inflation rates across all those classifications. And there's also the Student Opportunity Act, which is another layer. So the first thing they're going to do is going to apply, that's being phased in over six years. So this is, this will be the third year. So they're going to phase in those increases are mostly to employee benefits and special education and low income. And then after that, we layer on the inflation rates, which is 4.5% on all the other classifications and on top of the SOA. And then finally, we plug it into the calculations for the local aid from Air and Shirley, and then contributions, I mean, and then also for its Chapter 70. So they will, those will be probably better than we ever had for an estimate. But we still like to have those numbers at the end of January, just because we're still developing.
Yeah, because when the state pulls the rug out from underneath you by having, coming up with a number either way that you weren't expecting, then you look like, oh, well, who are we?
It always changes, too. So we're going to be getting late changes as well. So we're just going to have to be flexible.
Just out of curiosity, who is it? Did you say the Department of Education that's asking us to build off of estimates? Like who did that come, so not the new, not the new governor? That's it?
No.
This is where I want you to start? It's the Department of Ed?
Department of Ed is, is giving all districts the guidance of how they want us to do it.
Okay.
They're not, it's not mandated, but they're, this is what they're recommending.
Okay.
So is it likely, there was some scuttlebutt, is there likely that there's going to be a new Commissioner of Education with the new?
Oh, I, I'm not sure. I don't, I couldn't speculate on that.
There was a much discussion about that at the school committee conference.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So they're like, we don't know who we're going to have after January 1st. And because the new, going to appoint a new Commissioner of Education?
I think it was in the mask, this letter, yeah.
They haven't done it yet.
I feel like they did something.
Is it a new secretary?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Pat Tutwiler?
Yeah, it's a new secretary, but not a commissioner.
The secretary's on the governor's cabinet. The commissioner is a step down from that.
That's what I'm confusing, thank you.
Right. Too many titles. Thank you, Bill. Is there anything else you would like us to know?
I think if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Anyone?
If I can.
Are you expecting any, now that we, I mean, we changed party affiliation in the top office, are you expecting any changes in the process based on that?
I think typically, you may see a little bit more funding through the Democratic Party. But that's not always the case. I mean, with Governor Baker, and it's been, we've always had significant funding, no issues.
I guess that's why I was asking who was saying be conservative with the, you know, the estimates. Because if it's the Department of Education, that's a much, you know, different entity than the new governor, who may be looking to fund education differently. So that's why I was curious, who was saying that?
So the 4.5% inflation rate is pretty low, because right now, it's about 8%, just under 8. So that is conservative. So it should only go up, hopefully. That's the position you want to be in. You don't want to be the other way.
Right.
So that's where we are.
So then, then the other thing is with all the grants and stuff, which are running out, if they do give us more money, that would be a huge help.
Yes, ESER 3 is, goes for one more year, FY '24.
Right.
We have a lot of our positions are added. Counselors and medical staff are
Covered by that.
Are being paid under the ESER. So we have one more year before we have to make some decisions there.
Right. How many balls in the air would you like? Thank you. Anybody have anything else for Mr. Plunkett? The other new business that we have is bargaining. Dr. Runda?
Madam Chair, we have four contracts that will expire in June. The paraprofessionals, clerical, food service, and custodial. So we are asking you to vote tonight to open bargaining with all four units. This is typically done in one meeting, all of us in the same room. Is that correct? Mr. Plunkett?
We combine the meetings, and then we break out if there's anything specific to the groups that they don't want to discuss in front of the other, the other groups. But, we try to combine them.
Thank you. This will be my first time negotiating with these, with these units. But, we were also hoping that a school community member or two might be interested in joining the negotiations team.
Do we have any idea when they're, when we would start them? Do they have, do they have a request on when to start them and?
There has not been a request to start. We did receive the formal letter from the paraprofessionals union to open negotiations. We had a conversation before winter break, and I received the formal letter from the representative that, it's, it's not one, it's their state representative for the, I can't think of their-
ASME?
From ASME? The ASME?
Yeah, and I can't think of the rep's name. It's escaping me at the moment, so. Once the school community votes to open these negotiations, we would set up a meeting with the president and vice president of each unit and figure out the dates.
So, is this something that we would like to have completed to work into the, work into the budget? So, we have those numbers?
So, these contracts are effective July 1. They're fiscal, these four units. So, yeah, we'd like to have, have them finished by the, by May, by the end of May.
Do we have someone who has a interest in being on the negotiation, negotiating committee for the four unions that their thing is up? Number one?
I'll volunteer to learn. So, I probably shouldn't be the primary.
Before everybody else got here, we said they had to do it. Anyone else? Because we can have three. We can't have four. But, we can have three. If anyone else is interested, come forward and we'll make that happen.
I'll do it, as long as it's going to be done before-
April?
May. I mean, I've done it several years, so I'm happy to do it. But, it's also good that you guys learn it.
So, Dr. Rinda, if you would contact those unions, please, and tell them to, tell them we're ready.
Okay.
And I assume Mr. Plunkett's going to be there.
Do you believe we need a formal vote for that to open?
To open.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then to open the negotiations with the, and if you would name the different unions, please.
I'll make a motion that we enter negotiations with our four bargaining units covered by the ASME, which is clerical, custodial, food service-
Paraprofessionals.
And paraprofessionals, thank you.
So, a second?
I would second that motion.
Is there any more questions or discussion? Hearing seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we can have the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
You going to lead off with Mr. Kendall's stuff first?
So, since there was, oh, I'm sorry.
You going to do Mr. Kendall's stuff also?
That is the report.
Sports updates?
Well, since it's only one and a half days since the last school committee meeting, we only have a sports update for the superintendent's report. And this is, this is fresh off the presses from Mr. Kendall. The winter sports season is off to a strong start. The boys' basketball team hosted the third annual General Holman Memorial Tournament over the winter break, coming in second after losing to Luenberg in the championship game. The boys are 3-2 and face Murdock at home tonight, actually, right now. Girls' basketball is off to a 2-1 start and will face Murdock in Winchton tonight. The boys' middle school team is 3-0 and was at Quabin this afternoon, while the girls are 2-1 and are also at Quabin. The track team has won both its dual meets and will be back in action next Wednesday, January 11th, at Vicksburg High School. Freshmen and sophomores will be competing at the underclassmen meet at the Reggie Lewis Center on Sunday, January 8th. The boys and girls swim teams co-op with Bromfield off to a great start. The girls are undefeated, while the boys have just won the defeat. Girls' co-op ice hockey is off to its best start in years. Thanks in part to the play of Air Shirley students Carly Ewatt and Bella LeBlanc, nine Air Shirley students are participating in boys' hockey co-op with Luenberg. The Blue Knights are 2, 3, and 1 on the season and will host Oakmont Friday, January 6th at 5:30. The cheerleading team has performed at two basketball games, and coaches are doing a great job with their eight student athletes. Unified programming will kick off in the next couple of weeks with mini golf and hopefully bowling.
Thank you very much, Steve Kendall, our athletic director. Always good to hear.
Can I ask a clarifying question, if you guys know it?
Sure.
Do you know what Vicksburg High School is? Is that something I should, I think I've ever heard of that?
I have.
No?
No, we will double check that that isn't a typo. I think I have heard of Vicksburg High School, but I'm not sure.
Okay, just curious.
Maybe a Google search could clarify that. That was all for the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you.
Sounds like it's somebody who has a really good indoor track.
I'm thinking Vicksburg Square in Devens, but I'm sure that's not where they're having-
There's no Vicksburg in Massachusetts.
Huh?
There's one in Mississippi and one in Michigan, though.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Road trip. That's going to be an expensive bus. I'll just Google the track schedule if I-
You know, we, it's Vicksburg.
Oh!
That's where we have our whole meets.
I bet he was like voice to talk. That's, that's funny. Well, that makes sense. I was like, maybe it's a new school. Who knows?
I should know that my son would be there.
I was going to say, guess we could check the, the schedule.
Is there anything else you'd like to bring up, Dr. Rinda? Does Charlie have something from traffic control?
I'm changing, I'm going with that plan.
Which one?
The one that we talked about earlier? The plan for the dismissal, Laura White?
Oh, yeah, we are.
Well, Laura White will be changing their dismissal procedures starting a week from Wednesday. The buses will be in the back parking lot that is, that is connected to Lancaster Road.
Yep, 34 Lancaster.
And pickup will be on School Street. Parents will, if they're coming up Lancaster, they will take a left onto-
Was it Spring Street after school?
I think it's-
South.
South.
Jim, you have to know the south.
A left onto South Street, travel up Harbidge Street and take a right onto School Street.
Right.
They will be facing Lancaster. I'm sorry?
So, they're coming back on School Street?
They're going to reverse again. No way, no way.
We were asked-
Reminiscent of you being-
We were asked to change this. So, they will be asking the select board, the traffic advisory board will be asking the select board to change the one-way on School Street.
To the other way.
To the other way.
This is the third reversal. In the last, the last meeting with the people in the street, they're like, they were like, whatever you want, just pick. We're all done. We're not doing this one more time. The last time was because they wanted the buses to come in that way, so they could drop directly at the door without crossing over.
Who's asking?
And that was our last and final attempt.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, but I think the reason they want to change it is because what's been happening is the student, when parents are dropping off, they've been dropping off in the parking lot on Lancaster.
Well, drop off isn't the issue, it's pickup.
Oh, pickup, pickup. And what happens is the car snake down Lancaster and effectively makes Lancaster a one-way street.
With some big traffic on it, big trucks on it.
Yes, they're just parked on the side of the road waiting for the pickup to start. And it goes, I mean, there's days where it goes back to where the, like, water department is.
Goes back to Lancaster.
It's on Lancaster and like down-
Nobody goes back to Lancaster.
Oh, yes, Lancaster. So, I think that's the complaint, right? Is that people are-
The, the worry was that the traffic on Lancaster Road during dismissal was unsafe. We were asked to take a look and see if we could, could make a change. We are essentially flip-flopping. Buses are in the back parking lot. Drop, pickup will be on School Street facing the other direction. They will exit onto Lancaster. Cars can pull in the loop in the front of the school, well, not the second front of the school, where the office is. The front of the school, I guess, is Lancaster. So, it should be very safe for students. It should be safe for everybody.
And improve the traffic tremendously.
And it will also improve, it should improve the traffic.
Except for all the people that now are pulling on the Lancaster.
Who, I'm just curious, who asked? Was it the town?
The traffic advisory.
They will only take half an hour to pull.
Is that a, a-
It is a subcommittee of the select board.
Oh, so they'll pay for the police detail that has to be there to get people out.
They have to have one now to keep people from being hit by trucks, so.
There's, there's police, they're up at the school almost every day.
As well.
There's cops there anyway.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, perfect.
So, hopefully this will, once parents have this routine down, hopefully we'll eliminate that, that need.
It'll be good for two years.
Better than, better than what it is now, so, good, good. And it doesn't matter what you do, half the people will love it, half the people-
Who knew there was a transportation safety board in the town of Shirley? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, traffic, traffic control.
Traffic control. Cool.
Anything else, Dr. Rinda? Anything else, Mr. Cleary? Anything else, Mr. Plunkett, that you would like to talk to us about?
Hey, let's move on.
Let's move on. Ongoing business, regional agreement. I just received some information this morning that the state had comments, and I haven't had a chance to review them. I got them this morning, and I just didn't get back to it. So, I'd like to table that until the next meeting, which we can have a more complete presentation on it, instead of fumbling through halfway. So, the next thing is our policy-
Are those electronic, and is it possible to like, I just know that-
They're, they're not formal yet. So, when I get them formally, I'll pass them on to everybody, okay? They're not, they're not very formal. So, number 10, policy review report.
There's no update from the policy committee?
No update, we're waiting for Mask to get back, okay. Other topics not for discussion, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Do we have anything tonight?
One and a half.
Okay. Chairman's notes. First of all, I hope everybody had a really, really good vacation and time off and time to take a deep breath. The weather certainly coordinated, except for people who wanted to ski, like me.
Or fly.
Huh?
Or fly.
Or fly.
I was on that Southwest flight.
Oh, did you make it?
I'm here.
Mine was canceled.
Yours was canceled?
Yep, we drove to Florida instead.
See, good workaround.
Fun.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of quality time in the car with the kids. Look at the bright side of it. So, I am reaching into and going to find out how to structure it. While we have goals for the superintendent and goals for the, goals for the schools, it's been suggested that we do some goals for the school committee. And so, people will think about that in the next two weeks. I'll see how it should be structured. All right, so, I think it's a good thing to step back at the beginning of the year and say, where do we want to go? And what do we want to see? And what do we want to do? So, put that in your thinking for the next two weeks, and we'll see how we do. Communications?
All right.
If anyone has anything else.
I don't want to have a deep breath. I'm good.
You're on, come on.
Wednesday, January 11th, there is a 90-minute early release. Lunch will be served. Dismissal times for the high school and middle school are 12:50 p.m., and for the elementary schools at 1:45 p.m. On Monday, January 16th, there's no school in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. On Wednesday, January 18th, we have our next school committee meeting at 6:30 in the middle school library. Friday, January 20th, we have half-days for grades preschool through 12, and professional development for teachers. The dismissal times for high school and middle school are 11:20 a.m., and for the elementary schools, 12:15 p.m. Friday also will be quarter to, I'm sorry, on Friday, January 20th, quarter to ends for the high school. On Wednesday, January 25th, there's the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. The Federation for Children with Special Needs will be presenting basic rights, evaluation, and eligibility. This will be a virtual presentation at 6:30. Pre-registration is required. The registration link can be found in the district calendar and was sent out in this, this evening's weekly update. And Monday, December 30th, report cards will be issued for the high school. Tuesday, January 31st, the world famous Harlem Wizards will be returning to air to play a charity basketball game against Page Hilltop Staff and Parents. There will be a link to purchase tickets, and it can be found on the district website and was sent out in today's weekly update. That'll be at 6:30 p.m. Again, that's January 31st at the high school gym. And that's it.
Always a fun evening.
Always fun, always fun. Worth, worth the price of admission.
Y'all ain't going to ask the school committee to do something like that, are you? Because if not, I might be sick. I'm just like-
You have to learn between now and then how to spin the ball on your finger.
Right. I can do that.
Oh, well, there you go. You're already, you're in.
As long as I can stand still, I'll be good.
Get that at center court.
Is there anything else anyone would like to bring in front of the committee? In which case, I would entertain an adjournment to the basketball game.
I'm making a motion.
No. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I thought you had something to bring up. I was motioning on it.
Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, no.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstains? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone, and I hope we get to see the end of the basketball game.